All right. Good afternoon, commissioners. This is Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, biweekly informal meeting in which we gather together and just chat amongst ourselves about things without making any decisions. I don't believe we need to take the roll call. I will note for the record that all five commissioners or voting commissioners are present. Good to be back with you. I was down and out a bit this week, but I'm feeling better. So I'm able to join this afternoon. Um, with that, I think that Commissioner Messner had kind of the main point of topic, so I'll turn the meeting over to John. We also go by first names on casual Fridays.
Very good. So I wanted to chat a little bit today about the Martinez Irwin Fund. I think, I think Mike and Brett, you've got some information about it, but this was a fund that was developed from an NOAV or AOC associated with the Firestone tragedy. There was a penalty that was associated with that that generated an amount of money that was to be spent on specific things that were incorporated in the, in the order that was, that was sent to you guys. To date, there's been a number of things within that order that have been funded and are either in progress, or some of them have been completed. The initial order included the aerial survey, a couple of, a couple of vans for CDPH for air monitoring, some cameras and Eldar's for COGC staff, some satellite, some satellite work, methane emissions technology evaluation center funding, some gas detection meeting equipment. I'm obviously paraphrasing here. There's, the specifics are all in there. Some remote methane leak detectors were, were the initial pieces that were associated in that, in that funding within the AOC or within the order. In addition, since, since that order has been accomplished, there's been a couple of other projects that have been funded, including the Colorado Abandoned Wells Investigation. And actually, that second, that second van was after the initial, was after the initial order. The order does include in it that there would be directors' reports every six months to kind of update us on the fund and the utilization of those funds. We've, we've gotten a couple of those and also that some of these projects probably need to present to us over time to let us know the results of those, or at least the status of the different, of the activities that are associated with the different projects that were funded. There is a balance associated with that fund of approximately $7.8 million after we had funded all those initial projects. There is the date associated with, there's a date associated with when essentially we have to spend this money, which I believe is July 1st, 2025. So what I'm hoping to do today is just to chat a little bit about the Martinez Irwin Fund, chat a little bit about what kind of presentations we want to see from the different projects that have been funded. And then kind of have a brainstorm session about some upcoming potential projects that may seek funding, some structure around how we would like to see the remaining funds be utilized and and then I can put some, I can put some structure to that and get down and have like a grant application process. You know, really clear picture on who can apply, why they should apply, if there's any matching fund requirements and what that process would look like for being able to apply to those funds and then what those funds should be ultimately tied to as far as whether or not we want those funds to continue forward with some of the existing projects, whether we want to just have a couple of buckets that the funding needs to be focused towards and so on and so forth. So that's the general overview of it. I can, I can get into some specifics here at this point, but my, yeah.
Do you want to speak to the fact that you and Julie sort of set yourself up to sort of help, you know, move this forward and, you know, et cetera? And yet, otherwise, how come you talking?
Right. It's a, it's a good question. Why am I talking? So in order to be able to kind of help take some, some things off of the plate of both Scott and Julie, we had a conversation and I agreed that I would be happy to take over kind of the management of Martinez Irwin Fund. Ultimately, the entire commission is responsible for making decisions for the Martinez Irwin Fund, but I'm, I'm just going to take over the day-to-day management of it, the putting some structure around it, the accounting associated with it, and then the, the associated reporting with it as well, so that, so that we have a clear direction on how we're going to utilize those funds and have some clear reporting requirements associated with it. So that's, that's why I'm here today. Does anyone have any like questions about the, the fund generally before I start going into some of the details?
Yeah, I had one, John. So the, the initial projects where the money was dispersed, are those the projects that were specifically outlined in the AOC? Or was there actually some kind of an RFP project submittal process back then? So, so it was just the initial projects that were put forth in the AOC and we haven't as of yet received any applications for things outside of that.
It's both. So we had the initial projects that were in the AOC or in the order. Those were all funded. And there is a spreadsheet associated with those that states how much the actual funding was, and I'm happy to share that information with you all. And kind of where they're at and whether they're completed or whether they're still in progress. And so those were all funded. And then there was two additional projects, maybe even three additional projects that were funded since that order came out. I think there was a second aerial survey that was funded after that initial order. There was a, an additional van that was acquired for CDPH and there was the
Sarah Bartlett.
She has been, she, and I know that she's on here with us and I've had a lot of different conversations with her. Certainly there was an agreement that was, that was, that was come to with Sarah as far as a certain scope of work that she was going to do, but I don't have a specific dollar amount associated with that yet as far as an expenditure. And so that's, that's forthcoming here. That's one of the things that I want to talk to you guys about as far as, as far as that goes. But the other one is the, the orphaned well. I can't come up with the name of it right now.
And that makes sense to me.
Abandoned Wells Investigation. That's what it is.
Sorry for interrupting. I apologize. So my follow-up question is, how did, can you talk a little bit about the process of how those projects came to be? Did we do an RFP or were there just applications submitted? And, and talk about whether we liked that process and are interested in pursuing the same type of process?
Jeff could talk about the initial decisions and then I could talk about the ones that made, made as a commission.
Yeah. So Brett, um, a lot of thought and, and discussion between our staff and Kieran McGee because under the order and under all AOCs, the operator has to also sign off on the use of the funds. And so going forward, that is indeed the case that, you know, Occidental through Kieran McGee would need to be looped into any decision-making. And it's a, it's a joint approval process between both the commission based upon recommendations from our staff as well as Occidental or Kieran McGee. Those initial projects were developed between Kieran McGee and our staff. Basically, our staff came up with the initial ideas and they worked with CDPH to develop those initial ideas. And because they are being funded by, and I'll have Mimi correct me if I get this wrong, but you know, those are being funded directly by Kieran McGee. So all the money is in an escrow account held on to by Kieran McGee. The money does not come to commission. So project number one gets, you know, blessed as for usage of the thing, Kieran McGee funds it. And so there, there, in my, to my recollection, there was not a need for RFPs associated with that because it is this private company that is, is funding the work. And that's the case going forward as well, generally speaking. Going forward, we crafted the AOC back when I was director pretty broadly to say that the funds will be used to fund additional public projects that would protect or other, or otherwise aid the COGCC in fulfilling its mandate to protect public health, safety, welfare, the environment, wildlife resources. That's pretty broadly scoped. There was another component to it where there was, to use the funds to advance the goals of leak detection and repair because that's, you know, very much associated with the root cause of the, you know, the, the incident in question that led to the AOC. But those are our kind of parameters in terms of the projects that we would use the funds as we move forward with. And when again, we would need to, you know, you know, seek the review and approval of Kieran McGee for projects. And I, so that, that kind of lays the groundwork of where we were. And I appreciate John stepping up and sort of, you know, moving forward because we've not really created any sort of structure around those funds and now's a good time to do that. So did that answer your question, Brett?
Yeah, very much so. Thanks to Tom for the background.
Yeah, Karen?
I, I would just add that I think it's been an informal process and as things come up. So like a lot of during the, during mission change, a lot of folks brought up their concern about leaks from orphan wells and what the magnitude that might be. And so that kind of naturally led to a discussion of the commission of like, well, we have orphan wells that we could check and see what, what are they leaking and how much? And so that kind of, that led to that project. So I, there's kind of, I don't think there's been an official, like, let's open it up and ask, ask a sister agency if they want to apply. CDPH has just had some projects that I think have aligned with the goals of the commission. And so we have not this commissioner, but in past commissions have said green light. Yeah, that's an important thing for us to fund. It gives us information about oil and gas operations in addition to CDPH getting information. But it, I don't, and Jeff, you can correct me. I don't think it was set up so that like nonprofits or whatever could apply. I don't, I don't recall us ever having that conversation. So I just wanted to put out there, it's mostly been projects funded by COGCC and, and CDPH related to oil and gas.
Yeah, and it's, it was broadly crafted so that it was a fund that was going to be held by Kieran McGee. And that was important because if the fund was in commission, it had other ramifications. And so we didn't want it to be in commission. We identified the six or seven projects that everyone agreed were good usage, usages of the initial funds. And we set aside the remaining funds for a period of five years because we, we entered into this in April of 2020, if my recollection is correct, or maybe April 2019, no, 2020.
Yeah.
Spring of 2020, because then I became commissioner in, in July. And so there's not a mechanism for, you know, folks to, you know, apply, et cetera. I think it's more to the, you know, jurisdiction of us come, you know, and, and our staff obviously is doing, you know, does a good job of coming up with good ideas. So yeah, that's how it's set up.
Yeah. So I do think that that leads to a further conversation though, and I think we need to get into that a little bit because, you know, my notes, we've just gone through my notes, the, you know, we've got approximately $7.8 million remaining in the account. Like I said, the, the final accounting is, is due by July 1st, 2025. The language as far as how we utilize the remaining funds is to use to fund additional public projects to protect and aid the COGCC in its mission, in fulfilling its mission to protect public health, safety, welfare, the environment, wildlife resources. I think that creates the overall mission of the fund. I don't know as there was specificity in there as far as whether it had to be state agencies, outside resources, academic institutions, or, you know, how, how, who we utilized in order to aid the COGCC into fulfilling our, our, our mission to protect public health, safety, welfare, the environment, wildlife resources, but it still had to aid us as COGCC. I, I indicated that there was already some projects in the works. And so one of those projects is the scope of work that was provided by Sarah Bartlett that has a four bucket element to it. And you guys will all have information on that here shortly, but that's one that it's, at least the scope of work had already been approved and has been in the process for a while. And I think that scope of work and some of the specificities to that project are being refined as we speak, and I think will be presented to us by the end of August or early September in that range. My goal is to, is to actively develop a strategy for the utilization of the, of the remaining funds and develop that framework. And so my question to you all, and I think I'd like to just have a discussion about this is, you know, as you looked at that and as you understand kind of the overall mission of the remaining funds, you know, what, what should, what should that framework look like? Should we just have it pretty broad and just have that overall mission of fulfilling our goal to protect public health, safety, welfare, the environment, wildlife resources? Should we break it down a little further and have two buckets, as some have proposed, which would be a public health bucket and an environment bucket? Should we develop a structure, an application structure, you know, around what it, what it looks like to apply for these particular funds? What should that structure look like? Should it be a very formal structure? With the application process and, you know, application requirements and certain narratives associated with it, or should it be more of an informal process, which is kind of what we've been doing up to this point? Again, I'm, I'm jumping around here a little bit, but jumping back to the kind of the overall framework. Is it important for us that we build upon some of the already funded projects? Or should we have that net broad and wide and just as long as it ties into the mission, continue to fund projects? That, that meet that mission. You know, if we do have a more formal process, what are the submittal requirements or what are your thoughts around the submittal requirements? Should there be a matching fund requirement so that projects are attaching additional funding besides just utilizing the Martinez Irwin as the, as the, as the sole funding source for applications? Or should, if there was matching funds, should that be a more weighted application versus one that, that 100% depends on the Martinez Irwin funds? The question is, who can apply? Is it state agencies? Can it be local governments? Can it be nonprofits? You know, who, who would be able to apply for these funds? And so those are kind of the big picture questions that I'm hoping we can have a little bit of a, of a discussion about what I'm hoping today is just to have a brainstorm. So we're not making any decisions today. We're just having a brainstorm and throwing around some ideas and then I'll, I'll start to refine it. And then in a regular session meeting, we can start making decisions on this once I put some bookends to it.
So if, if I can at least make an initial comment and, and I realize that starting with the question may not be the most effective way of kind of starting a brainstorming session, but have you seen quite a bit of interest in additional projects come towards you? For, and, and I think, because I think that almost might be a starting point of, you know, it might be worth having a more of a regimented application process if there are 15 people online for $7.8 million, but.
I, I think that's a tough question though, because we haven't opened it up and said, and anybody can apply for this. It's always, it's just been the two state agencies and sometimes subcontracting with like universities to do work. And so I think that's a hard question to answer because I'm not sure that the door has ever been opened to a wide range of people to say, we have this money. Do you want to apply for something?
Yeah.
So I mean, but to, to answer your question, it, it hasn't been formally marketed. It hasn't been put out there to say, because there's never been any kind of specific structure as far as, you know, who can apply. Certainly CDPH has been involved since the very beginning. And, and I do think that CDPH has some projects that they're considering asking for funding for. And so that, that's certainly something that's in their mind as far as thinking about applying for funds. And certainly the scope of work that Sarah is working on, I think is, is something that is certainly being anticipated to apply for funds. But beyond that, I don't know of any projects coming straight from COGCC staff that may be looking for funding? Or should we open it up to other agencies or, and I'm not suggesting anything. I'm just like brainstorming. You know, what it may look like as far as potential projects. And so that's kind of, that's kind of what I'm hoping to like brainstorm here on a little bit. Sorry, Karen, I cut you off.
I, and I don't remember if you mentioned early when you were describing what's going on, that CDPH has a couple of projects that this money has funded related to aerial flyovers and what they discovered from an admissions perspective. And I think they're going to give a presentation at the end of August to the commission about how those went. Is that, is that right, John? Or is that too soon?
There's, there's another, that's, that's another topic of discussion on this same topic that I, that I would hope to get to today because right now we have a number of projects that have funded, that have been funded that I, I'd like to start scheduling for reports to the commissions on, and that includes the aerial flyover projects, the mobile air monitoring bands. You know, just kind of an update on, you know, how they're being utilized if they're, if they're working out well. What type of data are they trying to collect? So on and so forth. I think we need a, a report on the, the METEC leak detection program that we funded. The, the, the air data piece, which is the Sarah Bartlett piece, I think she would like to give us a, a, a report on kind of that, that refining of that scope of work. And then even though it just got funded and it may not be very far along, but at some point I'd like to see us get a report on the abandoned wells investigation as well. And, and trying to do these, I mean, I don't know if we need these projects to report to us. Certainly not every six months. I'd like to kind of talk about like what our expectation would be as far as when they would report back to us. Certainly by the time the project is completed, I would hope that we would get a formal report back as far as ones that are in progress. We want to see a, a, a report to us every, every year. And then I'm certainly going to put on my calendar that I give a formal report on the updates of these things every six months as, as is indicated in the order. So.
I think Jeff had something he wanted to say, but I, I would like to add to that discussion if I could.
Why don't you finish up, Karen? I'm just going to take us back to kind of the beginning.
Okay. I, I guess my point was, I think that depending on what we hear from CDPH about some of the projects that we funded and the outcomes of those projects, those could potentially lead to some additional projects and data that we would want collected or things that we would want investigated. And because I don't know the outcome of them, I, I guess I'm putting on the table for part of brainstorming. It might be helpful to get some input and from the reporting of the folks that we've already funded, whether or not those are leading us to more things that we want to investigate or fund.
All right, Karen, that is, I think how the party sort of contemplated this as well is that those initial projects would likely beget other projects down the road. But I wanted to bring us back. I mean, I think that I'm really appreciative of, of getting together and identifying some processes because it's been kind of a process less sort of approach with this pool, but we've all been very busy with a lot of different things. And so, you know, now's a good time. But I, I do want to be careful about the fact that when, when the commission, when I negotiated this AOC with Kieran McGee, the, there was, you know, carefully crafted language around the identification of projects and the agreement of the parties, and that's in paragraph three I. And so conceptually, I would not be in favor of sort of rejiggering how the AOC identifies the use of, of monies for new projects. We kept it at a high level and we kept it broad and we kept it at the discretion of the commission. We kept it with director's recommendation. And then we identified a process, a legal process by which we would work with Kieran McGee to jointly agree on, on projects. So I would caution that in my mind, it would be good just to leave the language as it is, and it's big and broad enough for us to do whatever we think is most appropriate with the money, which is, I think, a good place for us to be. So those are my cautionary words on that front.
Thanks, Jeff. And along those same lines, you know, the idea of separating it into a couple of different buckets in order to maintain the breadth of the discretion. I like the idea of, of keeping it in, in one bucket absent a specific reason to, to talk about separation. But then, you know, I might be missing something there if we've got, you know, so much interest that we think is going to be going forward and we don't want to, you know, shoot it all in one shot. I can see us talking about that, but otherwise I like the idea of maximum discretion.
And I think my general thoughts, and, and I want to start off saying I, I completely agree with what Karen was just saying there. And that's part of the reason I wanted to try and get an idea of if people have at least informally come to you about projects is understanding that efforts being taken already could lead to additional efforts. And if we've kind of taken that process of saying, hey, this is, we've determined that this is a good project to spend money on. As we're doing this, we realized that, you know, maybe breaking this off into two parts and looking at column A and column B would be helpful and beneficial to the commission and how it continues its policy goals as well. And so I think, you know, opening it up generally, in addition to what Jeff was saying about kind of going away from the language of the AOC itself, I think also potentially dilutes what, what we've kind of already looked at and, and are currently looking at. You know, and, and I'll say I did meet with Sarah about a week or two ago as well and kind of got a little bit of insight into what she's looking at. And I'm, and I'm definitely interested to hear more of her presentation and kind of see where it's going. But I think to me, what really jumps out is how we can make sure that the information we're given, whether it be from a nonprofit or a state agency or a local government, whatever the case might be, how it can be used, not just to identify concerns, but also take steps to resolve, to make our processes more efficient and more effective. And just as an example, not just, okay, we've got some air data. What do we do with their data? And, and kind of making sure that we can maybe use those funds to say, let's use that air data to see is there additional types of testings that we should do? To help, talking about the, the orphan, the orphaned wells and determining leaks. Is, is, are there similar areas where we should be looking towards things like that? We're noticing a lot of leaks coming from certain areas. It, should there be more funds spent on those kinds of things to make sure that that's not happening in the future? Are there additional technologies that can be looked into something like that to make sure that it's, it's not just identifying the problem, but also being used to help solve that problem?
Yeah. And do we go so far, Mike, as to when we have folks report on the projects that they're already working on? Do we go so far as to ask them to talk about whether they believe another phase is appropriate, what that phase might look like? As opposed to us just kind of inferring that, you know, I, I think I wouldn't mind asking particularly the projects that were outlined in the specific order. You know, have them report on the project, but also as part of that sake. And, and boy, if we had X dollars amount more, you know, this is a, this would be very valuable, you know? Might be, might, might kind of ping them as part of their report.
Yeah. Right. I, I think that's not a bad idea. I also can, you know, state each say to each of you that the, our staff, you know, was instrumental, you know, Greg and Mike and others in helping develop up those initial ideas. in helping develop up those initial ideas um with CDPHG and with Kier McGee. And so I would really want to lean heavily on our staff's review and analysis of the work product that is generated and hear from those educated folks as well as to, you know, are there next appropriate steps that sort of flow from what we've seen so far? So, you know, we'd want to get a report. We want to give time for staff to analyze it as well.
And similar to that, I think if if Mike and Scott and and Greg or whoever the case may be from staff have ideas on both what has been done or ideas on how it could be utilized. I I think that would be a good place to to look at the outset as well.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. That's where I was going to, that uh when we started talking about, you know, potential RFP or more structured application. I, you know, I'm starting to understand that staff might be able to generate the things that are most appropriate to the order. You know, organically without having to reach out to third parties. And if that's the case, and we just have this huge, you know, bank already in in staff's mind. At the very least, put that first priority.
And and you know, another idea I would throw out, um after John collects all these rambling thoughts and puts them into some form of a Google Doc that we can all look at, is share that with our management team. And then let's have a sec a subsequent follow-up meeting with those guys. Because, you know, they really ought to be in the room as we, you know, think about, you know, next usages of money, et cetera. Um because, you know, they were, they were the people who were smart enough to figure out what the initial uses was going to be. And so I'd love to have them as part of this this whole discussion.
I think um kind of going back to our discussion about the four buckets that Sarah's working on and all the data that's been collected from both agencies to date, and what does that data tell us or not tell us? I I think um we could benefit from continuing to work with CDPHG on what data is informative to help the commission make its decision and and decisions and where we might be lacking data. And if we're lacking, is there a way for us to figure out how to collect it so that we can make better decisions? And so I think we've been wrapped around the axle a couple of times about substantial equivalency. I think that we've had discussions with um in particular about different kinds of engines and their emissions and which are better or worse, or what are the costs and benefits of different types of fuels, et cetera. I think there's been a lot of questioning from folks about um and I I have to, I'm going to caveat this with. I don't think the commission's job is to figure out the health impacts or the risk assessment, but the existing one is quite old. And, you know, I don't know if we participate just by helping funding a a future one. Or if we talk to CDPHG about what kind of data do you need to collect to do another one? Can we help you collect that data or something? So I think there's just lots of things. Another thing that I've been thinking about, because it's the second presentation that we've gotten from staff around leaks and corrosion and what's going on there. I I don't know if that is actually a study that needs to happen or just a discussion with operators. But I'd be curious to know how we figure out how to minimize leaks from corrosive activities. It seems like a preventive thing to me for us to be able to tackle. So then I think that the ideas are probably limitless. And maybe we want to have a discussion about how much we want to relate to safety or public health or wildlife protection. Or is it all of these things that we still think are important?
I mean, I'm I'm taking a bunch of notes. I mean, what I'm hearing, I think, pretty clearly, though, is that the general consensus is that we we need to hear uh the results of the existing projects, particularly ones that are completed. Uh and even ones that are in process with an idea of what what that data may be, when it is completed and how it intends to be utilized. And and get that as a base of information for for future decision-making around this topic. So rather than just having a fund that opens up for any any application that meets this broad mission of the fund. We would rather see, because we had initial projects funded, the additional funding, the additional money primarily being utilized initially to fund kind of follow-ups to to some of the initial projects. Is is that is that generally what I'm hearing?
I would add to that what Jeff put in there, which is I I would be interested in hearing from our staff if they think there are important projects that they feel would add, be additive to information that would be good for us to have, but they just felt like there hasn't been an opportunity to um talk to the commission about it yet.
And and that's that that that's part of that reporting, I think, is for them to be able to absorb it and have them involved. As well as 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 far as what they think would be helpful or useful. Based on that initial reporting from some of the projects. So that's that's what I have right now as a general, kind of a a a general initial first step as far as starting to develop some structure. Uh, some of the other questions I I I I want to dig into here just a little bit is. And I and I think I also heard very clear that maybe not so many buckets, maybe just leave it as the broad overall vision, the one bucket to allow the maximum flexibility for um for potential projects. As we look at something, so I'm going to go a little bit off topic here. But as we look at some of this, uh because I just want to hear your opinions on it. Some of the information potentially that is being developed from these initial projects may be more beneficial for CDPHG and APCD in their mission versus COGCC and our mission. How important is it to you guys that the uh projects that are being funded have a direct effect on uh our policies and 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 our mission within COGCC versus um funding things that generally are helpful and protecting, but may not directly impact things that we do on the ground?
That's pretty important to me. I mean, and that's how the AOC was drafted, is it's COGCCs to assist the COGCC in its mission in fulfilling, to protect public health, safety, welfare, the environment, wildlife resources. And so I think we would be going contrary to the intent of the original order. And I think that our staff and and we and our stakeholders can identify plenty enough projects that are of assistance to us with possibly, in most instances, some tangential assistance to CDPHG. But I would keep the focus on 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 our agency.
And and I agree with that. And I think it it kind of goes back again to saying I I think CDPHG is is one of those groups that would be a great benefactor of these funds. But I think it's in working with us. So in looking at, you know, what kind of emissions are we getting from tanks? The corrosive issue that Karen's talking about, things like that. But it directly ties back to what we do and how can we make sure that we are doing our jobs to to protect those those resources. Um even if it's not our agency doing the specific work. Kind of because we are going, we do work with CPW, we do work with CDPHG. But ultimately, I think it it should have that tie back to with what we do.
To piggyback on that, right? Like, I think we want to know though, what we're funding over at CDPHG is going to be helpful data for us, for our decision-making also. I think that they have a specific mission and have potential funds coming in from various sources as well. And so, you know, um and I think this is where Sarah is important to us and why we hired her is to help us navigate who's collecting what kind of data and where gaps are and what data is helpful for us in our decision-making process. And um so I I do think um having Sarah be part of this conversation and helping us navigate some of these things would be helpful as well.
And I note for the record, Sarah's listening in, as is Greg, which is fantastic. So um, you know, you guys be aware, we're going to invite you to the next party.
And I also like the idea of, I I I agree with what's been said. I also like the idea of keeping in mind how closely the proposed project ties to the uh the things that caused the the actual incident and tragedy in Firestone. And and, you know, the more closely it ties with prevention of of those causes, you know, the happier I would be with it. And it kind of getting back to what we talked about a little bit before, John. I think process-wise, to me, it would be important for us to not necessarily have a a presentation that then piggybacks into a a request for additional funds at that point. I like the idea of kind of a comprehensive look and view prior to making future decisions about funding. Uh, you know, rather than kind of on a case-by-case basis. Does that make sense to you?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it again, and let me make sure I understand what you said. But um so in 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 your opinion, it would be better to have a comprehensive presentation of 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 all the projects. Take a step back, look at it holistically, and then take the next step forward as far as soliciting um additional projects. Is that is that what I'm hearing you say?
Not quite. Sorry about that. Um no, just for the timing of dispersment of funds. I don't necessarily need a comprehensive view of all projects in one presentation. But as each proponent comes in and makes a presentation, I wouldn't want to make a funding decision, an additional funding decision at that presentation. I'd want to see all the presentations first and kind of get a bigger picture of the the breadth of what's out there.
And then um so, I mean, under understanding that general direction that's being given there, and that makes a lot of sense to me. How how formal or informal would you like to see the application process be, I guess? So um I've been involved with lots of different grant programs. I've written hundreds of grants. Sometimes it's as difficult to write an application for a $5,000 grant as it is for a two and a half million dollar grant. There's lots of different requirements for lots of different grants in a in a formal process, matching requirements. You know, narratives around uh how it ties into mission, you know, overall beneficial impact of the project long term. I mean, there's lots of ways to approach it, you know, or on the other end of that spectrum is to keep it pretty informal, uh which is what we've got right now. And as long as it generally ties to the mission, and at least from what I'm hearing you all say, it ties to potentially some existing projects or some existing data that 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 uh that application process doesn't have to have really formal, specific um submittal requirements. So those are the two ends of the spectrum. I guess I just want want to hear from you all whether we want to see it lean more one way than the other way.
I my initial thought is, I I don't know that we want to make it extremely formal, especially if it is something and we still have to go back to Kier McGee on, uh because then I feel like we're kind of going through a process twice. And and I should have mentioned this earlier, and I and I know you briefly brought it up in there, the idea of like matching funds and that kind of stuff. I like the idea of a project that's going to get matching funds, but I don't necessarily want to prohibit a good idea or a build on on something that has already been done and could be continue to be helpful just because it doesn't have matching funds from someplace. Uh but I do like the idea of the matching funds. And sorry for that aside. But but I I'd say overall, with respect to that that question specifically, I I think I don't know if I'd say completely informal, but but I like the idea of something at least a little bit more informal. So we can have discussions like this and like what we've talked about with staff. So we could say, hey, this has been brought up as an idea, kind of, is this something we want to talk about? And we can kind of go back and forth with the the potential recipient of the funds a little bit and say, you know, is this something that you could consider adding on af- after we've talked to staff? And instead of making it all done in one formal application process and having to go back and maybe amend the application or something like that. I think keeping it a little bit more informal allows for some of that flexibility as well.
I tend to agree. I I think that the way it was drafted in the AOC provides some parameters around it. But it does provide for uh a, you know, a fairly informal approach so that good ideas that can come to us can come in any fashion, you know, through our staff or otherwise. Ultimately, it's to the discretion of this commission um that we need to approve anything. We've got our staff backing us up. Um so and you know, the way that we set it up, where the money remains in Kier McGee's trust account. And then it doesn't ever come to commission that goes directly to the vendor. Um that really is sort of, you know, super cool for a state agency to be able to do good things without having to have that formality that sometimes provides unintended constraints on on good ideas. That's my private attorney talking.
And I agree wholeheartedly, as as long, you know, as we continue to have the ideas generated organically from staff and from existing projects as we're talking about. If we do get into a position, though, um where we need to expend the funds through other means, you know, via an RFP or some other type of application process where we're reaching out to local governments or not-for-profits or something like that. I think we should kind of reconvene and talk about whether the formality should shift a little bit.
And you could even do that on a case-by-case basis. You know, here's an idea that would really be most best served if we did some form of an RFP. Versus here's an idea, we know exactly what we want to do. Let's let Kier McGee go use some of this money to do this and without the need.
Do you see any benefits uh to, I mean, right now, we have one pot of money. Do you see any benefits to um oh, for lack of a better term, like divvying up that pot of money and saying 70% of that should go towards tying into existing projects or or big picture projects or agency projects? And then having a million dollars or a million and a half dollars, I'm not making numbers up here. This is just for brainstorming purposes. Uh for smaller grant applications, for projects that still meet the mission, but maybe aren't going to be the you know, the 1.1 million dollar ask, it may be a $35,000 ask or a uh, you know, a $200,000 ask or something like that to um still do good projects but not be these big kind of more informal asks that that have been done in the past. Any thoughts around that? Uh again, this is just for brainstorm purposes.
I was going to say, I'm a fan of one bucket and being flexible and um trying to pick kind of the most um salient and and meaningful projects that we think would help the commission in its mission and help it protect public health, safety, welfare, and the environment.
Yeah, I I agree. I I think flexibility is probably better to to not, you know. And and again, just using kind of numbers like you threw out, say, instead of saying 25% go to to a project that's less than $500,000. Don't want to get to a position where we're four months away and we're like, oh, we've only used a portion of it, or I wish we would have had more for it. Just kind of keeping that that flexibility is probably, you know, if if somebody says it's been extremely helpful doing some of this wider scans before to check for some of the methane leaks, I really think it'd be helpful if we did that again, being able to say, you know, yeah, let's use it from that one bucket. Not, oh, we're getting close, should be, should we focus on one ahead of another?
Yeah, I I agree. Um I also would just, you know, kind of bring a historic piece to this that I I, you know, you know, continues to remain be important. Um, you know, the commission named this the the Martinez Airwin, I forgot the exact name, fund. And uh, you know, Ms. Erin Martinez was involved in the creation of the AOC and the way this is structured, you know, had her support. And so I would be hesitant to, you know, do things that you know, undercut sort of, you know, how we landed and where we landed. Um and, you know, she's not, you know, as involved now, but um that, you know, yeah, I mean, I that that's an important consideration.
All right. So just a couple of other questions so that I kind of fill fill out my notes here. Any other thoughts around the matching fund piece? And I think we kind of hit that one, but if I didn't want to cut anyone off on that.
I mean, I think the point on the matching fund is that everyone agrees that that's always a, a good consideration or a good idea and ought to be. You know, part of any discussion of any project. Uh, but it's not necessary. I, I like the way Mike, you sort of framed the, the point there.
Um, and then. Kind of last big picture piece here is, um. I mean, right now, the, the, the primary applicants have been COGCC and CDPHE. I guess who could apply? Is, should it be more open? Should it be narrow? Should there be no bookends on that? What are, what are your thoughts on who could apply? Not, you know, state agencies. Being CPW, CDPHE, COGCC, maybe other state agencies that I'm not thinking of or.
I think state universities, because they're part of the state system, I think to me are, are relevant. And I think we have a, a couple of. Universities that, um, have a lot of expertise and knowledge in some of the work that we do and, and work on those issues.
And I don't want to put too much undue pressure on staff, but you know, is there some merit to, um. Not necessarily opening it up for applications, but that all applications come through a member of staff. If there's a, a staff champion. You know, and it's, and it's, um, even a not for profit or a university or somebody else that comes through staff and staff. Says, yeah, that's a great idea. I'll help move that forward. Like the idea of kind of staff moving things forward rather than an independent proposal. Um, unless it puts us in a position where we're just not getting the diversity of projects that, that we'd like to see. It's, it's hard to, hard to know exactly how much could possibly be in the queue already for staff.
Yeah. And I think that, I mean. Again, I'm not sure how marketed this has been. Um, and so, um. I mean, I certainly don't want to put any additional burden on staff. I mean, the goal of this is to take burden away from staff and we kind of house it under me. Um, and. Not that I'm making any decisions, we're making the decisions, but I do think that staff input is really important because it seems silly for us to make decisions. Uh, to fund things that are, that are not helpful. And so, um. And so I'll, you know, I'll, I'll chat with folks to see what that may look like, but I do think that there may be individual staff that have. Connections that may. That may be able to have projects that could be funded through staff, through their, their interactions, either with a nonprofit or another agency or a local government, or whatever that may be. Those are some things that I was thinking about as far as asking this question, whether we want to be. How restrictive we want to be as far as we can apply.
I, I think we need to think about what was, what might be the, um. Outcome if we open it up more broadly and what kind of things people would bring forward without us having guardrails? And whether or not that's useful for their time and ours. I, I'm not, it sounds awful that way that came out and I didn't mean that, but I, I'm just envisioning. Different kinds of things that we might not think were actually meant for this fund. And so. If we're going to open it up more broadly, I think then we have to come up with better guardrails and, and, uh, description of. What we're looking to try to fund.
I don't necessarily think it came off as, as strong as you, you thought it did there, Karen. Um, I. But I, I, I agree with what you're saying as well. To me, I think the idea of it being done. By a nonprofit or a local government or somebody doesn't necessarily bother me, but I, I think consistent with what we talked about before. I, I think it's important to make sure that it ties back. To what we're trying to accomplish. And so I, I think that. Potentially it might be more of an uphill battle for a nonprofit that's been looking for funding to get some kind of research done or some kind of project done. It, it might be more of an uphill battle for them to say, but here's how it's directly going to help you and you accomplish your mission as the, as the commission.
What, what about some language that would be like, um. You know, state agencies, uh, in, including universities would be eligible to apply. And that non po- nonprofits have the ability, others would have the ability to apply in partnership with that, with a state agency, right? So if. You know, if a, if a academic nonprofit is partnering with CDPHE or CPW to, to push forward a project, it would have to be. In partnership with them. So that agency would have to sign off on, on it and be a partner with it, which would. Which would create some bookends on that. Um, I don't know what you guys think about that, but that may, that may open the door a little bit for some. Some more unique partnerships that, that, that may be good projects, um, without opening them so wide that we get, um. Overwhelmed with requests.
I like that idea. I think it ensures that hopefully there's like someone putting a lens on it first before it would. Come to us for discussion.
The only thing I would suggest is if we're doing anything that is narrowing the scope of what is fairly broad. Let's make it a may, not a shall, just so that we can keep our options open. I, sorry, but I'm proud of the way we kept this as being a fairly. Open, um, to the discretion of commission. And I think it just is helpful to always, you know, keep that aspect there. So we can provide some direction, but it's not, you know. Nonprofits can only do this if they do it with an approved state agency or whatever, school or whatever. Okay, my two cents.
Yeah, sure. I'm proud of ownership.
And then, uh. I guess just a, a, another little question as far as some, some structure goes, um. I mean, I, I hear every, I, I, I've, I've got all the notes as far as how it ties into existing projects and you want to kind of get that comprehensive. Understanding of the existing projects and then, you know, tie some of these other projects into those and, and that whole piece. As far as what you as commissioners would like to see initially. To kind of green light. I mean, do you guys want like a one pager as far as a proposal goes? To review and then give it a thumbs up for, you know, doing to, moving forward with like a, a, a more formal application with more information. Or do you just want to see kind of the whole proposal all at once? Um, when, when we're making decisions about funding potential projects, because I've, I've been in some situations where you initially just do a one pager. Kind of go through the one pagers, decide if that's something that you're interested in getting more information on or not. The ones that you're not interested in getting in more information, then they, then you ask them not to go further. The ones that you are, then they would have the full package that would be provided to you, um, for decision making. So I don't know if you guys have an opinion one way or another there.
I, I think I prefer the one pager similar to the, the detail of the grant application. That way we can kind of get an idea and say, yeah, I think this would be helpful towards what we're trying to accomplish. We can sort of talk to staff about it and say, hey, this seems like a good idea. Any thoughts of what you would have before we go back rather than. Having the applicant go further down the process and then trying to change from there or modify.
Yeah, again, in line with my previous comments, I'm kind of comfortable with where we're at, but if. I, I think folks that provide, you know, kind of a summary. Before they delve into the details, probably makes sense to, so that we can give kind of a tentative thumbs up or, or no, that doesn't, that's not something we're interested in.
I mean, that was the goal and so that, the, I mean, that's the thought of this process. And I'm not saying we should do it one way or the other, but. Would, would be so that people could get an idea whether we actually thought this was a good idea or not before. Putting all that effort into, you know, developing a proposal. So that was the thought there. So those, I think, answer all my questions. I could put more structure into this and then, uh. And then provide it to you guys at a, at a future regular session meeting to make sure everyone's comfortable with it. It seems like there is no question that we want. Presentations from existing funded projects, um, to happen sooner than later. And get those accomplished. I do, well, actually there's one other, there's one other important thing that I want to talk about, so I won't, I'll try not to forget that one, but, um. There is some. Consideration that we may need to give to Sarah Bartlett's projects. Before we may hear from all of these other projects because she's already been approved for a scope of work. And I was moving forward with some of her information and so, um, as long as it's okay with you guys, I think that's one that. We may, that may be a funding request we hear prior to, um. Hearing the results from all of the projects. Um, does that seem okay with you guys?
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. It's already in progress.
Okay. Uh, and then there's one other decision point here and Jeff, jump in here if I'm missing something on this one, because this is my understanding. But that there was some decision made that $3.5 million of this fund would go to the orphan well program at some point. That decision or that, that transfer of those funds has been postponed a number of different times now. Is that something that we still want to consider doing or would we rather hold that money back? For funding projects now that we have, uh, a new and unique. Funding mechanism for the orphan well program as well as federal funding.
First off, I don't recall that decision. I just don't recollect if and when we may have made such a decision along those lines. But secondly. If that was a decision that was made, it was in a truly different set of circumstances on orphan wells. And we're in a much different place and we're not in need of transferring penalty monies into the orphan well fund from my perspective. Um, and with the federal funds and the new financial assurance regime coming into play, I think we're in a fine place. Um, you know, I. Have you touch base with, you know, uh, Scott, Mimi and Jared about that, John? Um, especially before Jared gets out of here, but I think that's going to be their answer too.
Any other thoughts on that one? All right. That's all I've got. That was really helpful. Um, I appreciate everyone's thoughts on that and this will help me. Put something together, uh, for you guys here shortly. Um, I'll start working on getting. Presentations lined up. Over the next couple of months and, uh. And then hopefully get this structure kind of back to you guys. In the next two to three weeks.
Just wanted to say thanks so much for taking the helm on, John. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
And, and reiterate that, uh. You know, and if there's anything that I can do to, to kind of help you get that across the finish line, I'm, I'm happy to, to help out, but. But no, I definitely appreciate the kind of taking this above and beyond to help staff as well. So it's pretty awesome. So much appreciated.
Yeah, thanks, John.
What else we want to talk about?
About that weather.
I don't have anything else.
Anybody else have anything?
Did others watch the healing presentation yesterday?
I was not able to. I had a KPK meeting. That I was undertaking. Um, and so I did that instead, but hopefully I'll be able to go back and catch it.
I thought it was good.
Good. Glad I was able to forward that around.
Definitely food for thought.
All right. Have a good weekend.